Waitley School Committee, September 24th. Welcome back, everybody. Thank you for your flexibility earlier in the month rescheduling. So I will hand over to you.
You hand it over to me for reorganization.
Reorganize.
All right.
I make a nomination to have Katie Edwards as our chair again.
I second. It's not reorganized.
All right, any other nominations?
All in favor?
Vote to close nominations.
Vote to close nominations.
All those in favor? Seeing majority. All those in favor? Katie Edwards, green chair. All right. Majority vote.
Congratulations, Katie.
Majority vote, I hand it back to you.
That was quick, okay. We need to figure out the vice chair.
You gotta have that whole, you got the whole list you're going to have to go through.
I'll make a nomination that Maureen Nichols will be the vice chair.
So you gotta do all those positions again.
Ah, it's already in print here.
Yep.
Well, this is last year's. It's not already in print. It's just last year, so you can decide.
Are you okay with that? Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
We have to close it first?
No, no, no.
They have Maureen on as secretary, but that's not...
That's not really a role, is it? That would be Mary.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you...
It's always been a position.
It's, you know, it's been a position. It comes in if, for example, if you were, we've had to use it several times at Frontier, where if you were, basically, if the minutes had to be done for something, you'd need someone officially to sign off on the minutes for a loan or something like that sort of thing, and it comes to the secretary or the clerk. And so it is actually an official position, so it's not a position of the chair, it's kind of a division of power.
I thought last year I was vice chair and secretary because you were on the union thing.
Yeah, it's wrong on the front. It's right on this page here. I'll make a nomination for Maureen to be secretary then.
The front, this one.
Oh, okay. I'll make sure she's...
I'll second that. You're okay with that? All in favor?
All right.
I'll make the motion, so now we're going to talk about Frontier Rep. Assuming Bob, since we're all keeping our roles, Bob, I nominate Bob Howard to be Frontier Rep.
I second that.
All in favor? Okay.
I think the rest of them, you just appoint, or do we...
Then at this point, you appoint and see if they make sure they want to do it, but I guess we're all the Union 38 representatives.
Yes. No questions? Negotiations? Sick bank committee, I don't know what that is. I don't remember what that is.
Sick bank committee is if a staff member wants to use the sick bank, the committee's made up of two, school commanders and two union members to decide whether or not they should get access to the sick bank and how many days they would get. So unfortunate.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had to do any...
Yeah. That's a good, that's a good, that's a good thing you don't have to access sick bank.
Okay.
And I'll stay on the negotiation team.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Do you want to make any changes? Are you good?
No, I'm fine. I never did anything with the policy review and...
Let's just do that.
It's a good position.
Yeah, no, the policy review committee, you know, I know Lynn did a bunch of the policy reviews, went through the whole book, that was kind of the thing that she did in her first year.
Yeah, you were, Bob was on the committee that year.
So, right now, the policies are coming through, it's only as they come, as they change, but if we ever wanted to go back, something being tense around something, you know, we create a subcommittee.
But for these new ones that are in here, was there a meeting?
No, no.
Okay.
So, those are, so I'll propose policies, I get from MASC, I may could pull the policy committee together to do it, but...
Do they have, don't they have a, like a, something they issue?
Right, so I get, so I get policies updated from MASC, or stuff, problems that we run into, where I say, you know, we should really update our policy on that, or maybe we didn't actually have a problem, but we just said, well, you know, our language, you know, we got through an issue, but our language can be clearer, and then sometimes I bring that policy through, so, you know, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're reorganized, sort of, not really, but...
So you didn't really change anything?
Back to last year's. That's okay, worked well.
That's fine, I just want to make sure, make sure I got that correct.
As long as everybody's good.
All right, everybody's happy moving forward.
So, we have the minutes from the last two meetings to approve, do we approve them separately, or does it matter?
You can do them together.
Together.
Especially if the, if the...
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2019, and the special meeting minutes of June 28th, 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. So, oh, I didn't welcome Shelley to our Waitley, her first Waitley School Committee meeting. See how we're not quite as organized probably as some of the other ones, but...
And the book's a little thin right now.
I know.
By the end of the year, it might be a little thicker.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
Hand it over to me.
There are nine warrants here for you to sign. The total presented is $63,114.51. And in regards to fiscal year 19, we have completed the closeout process with the town, working on balancing some of the grants, but otherwise closed out there. We carried encumbrances over to FY '20 totaling $44,894.04. That just means that we have bills from '19 left that still need to be paid in '20, they come from '19 funds, they don't impact '20 funds, but those are carried over as a liability for us. School Choice funds, which I think is a little bit different than what you all were anticipating, I'm happy to explain this more if necessary, so Waitley is currently rolling over into FY '20, $237,885 from School Choice. $45,000 of that roughly was from the '19 funds from the state, and then $192,000 was being rolled over from prior years. And then I'm currently working on the fiscal year 19 report to submit that to Gessie by October 1st. Any questions about that?
So, how did we end up the year compared to our whole budget?
So, we ended up reclassing about $82,000 from things that were originally going to be on School Choice back to the local budget, which is why you're...
$82,000?
Yeah, that's why your School Choice number's much higher than...
Than we thought it was going to be.
Than we thought it was going to be.
Yeah, so that means that the school did a good job not spending that budget.
And the cherry sheet numbers cannot differ in Jan, in June rather, up increased, so there was a little bit more. There's a little bump, how much was that?
I think it went from about $230 to $257, so almost $30,000.
For wait, just for Waitley?
Mm-hmm. Your final payment was, once they adjust at the end of the year to make up for anything that wasn't there in October when they do the original distribution amounts, they owed us quite a bit, almost $30,000. So, going into '20, I did give you the expenditure report, there's not a whole lot of activity at this point. You will see that there are a couple of negative accounts, those are simply because we need to make some adjustments in the budget and get things in the right line item, there isn't actually, I mean, one overspent at this point in the year. And then the, the School Choice numbers at this point for fiscal year '20 are $254,658. Those will get adjusted in October when they look at enrollment numbers again. And then I'm currently going through the spreadsheet that TMS built for us for the budget for this year, just kind of making sure that all the formulas are in line and that nothing was missed and everything is accounted for. So, continue working on that.
So, one of us would be if we could get the School Choice printouts?
Yeah.
That would be...
Definitely.
See how that budget, any other accounts that are being used? We, in the past, have gotten all the accounts, we can kind of see what's going on with everything.
Yeah, the rollover from '19 to '20 is not complete yet for special funds, just the general fund budget isn't, so I'll work on that by next time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the suggestions is maybe we should wait until November, because the next one will be a joint meeting, and be a lot of, you know, for Shelley to try to get, not saying she couldn't do it, but give her a chance, you know, next month is going to be a tough one for the five school committees and stuff like that, so maybe we wait till November unless she has time to do it or something like that.
Okay.
We were talking about it at Frontier, about, you know, giving her a chance to agree.
What, give it all together?
Yeah, exactly, so, not saying you couldn't, but I'm just...
It's a good point, we were talking about just basically, because you can't do the, the joint committee is going to be a lot of talking about, you know, a lot of curriculum stuff, and MCAS, and pressure development plans, and my evaluation has to get done and kind of put aside, you know, so we're building that, we talked a little bit later today about building that thing, but the idea of kind of the deeper dive into the budgets, we'll have the October one reported by then, and so on and so forth, so just to kind of have all the information for November, kind of the deeper dive about where everything's at. Just, also, that other meeting comes up on the 8th, it comes quick, so, that was just the thought, I think.
Yeah, it's a good idea. This meeting's late, too.
I figured, yeah, I mean, how much stuff, if I'm tied up with Frontier, you guys are over there, I mean, great if you could do the business part of it, is it?
No, I thought, that makes sense to me, that we just use the November meeting to really catch up on where we are and look at the year ahead.
Right, and one thing, I mean, we're looking at is, we got more money into School Choice, but we're still overspending what we're taking in. So we have a, we have a bigger, we have a bigger bank of money there, but we're still spending more than we're taking in this next year, so...
Although we do think that School Choice number's going to go up based on current enrollment.
Right, it was, yeah, it's up by four, it's not six, it was four. I did my math wrong in front of you today, but I don't know how I messed it up by two, so I'll talk about that. But I was talking to Chrissy, so...
You were super close.
Oh, super, oh, super close.
Four, six, four, six.
But we're up both of them. Being up four.
That's a good job.
She really helped me along there, but I'll get there, right?
You can do it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You just can't do it yet.
Okay, thank you. So, but yes, that's up probably $20,000, you know. As you know, we're small schools, so it's finite, it's finite, and it's interesting when those, you know, those shifts from...
The shifts make a big difference.
You get those shifts from whatever to Jan, you know, and that's why we have to have that padding, because it could go either way, you know.
Well, that was the account we're worried about.
Yeah, right.
Created some concern last year, so it's nice to see.
Well, it's always going to create concern, until we get to more steady state than normal.
If we can, you know, if, I think we did it this year, but even next year, when we do the budget, if we could start taking some of the burden off School Choice and save it, instead of using it always for, we'll say, salaries or something like that.
Right.
Start using it for more kid-related things, you know, and I always bring this up since I've been here, you know, I love it, the year we spent $50,000 on a computer lab where we had this mullible thing, it was, you know, it was for the kids, it wasn't paying just for salaries and stuff like that, more...
Well, and we got the nice increase from the town, so we need to really take advantage of having that this year and put that to big use.
And sounds like someone that has been shifted a little bit.
Yeah, and last year I...
Yeah, we did, and I think we shifted a little bit last year, so that, I mean, if we could do, if we could do it this year a little bit, when budget time comes around, that'd be, that'd be great, so...
Even just moving one higher-paid teacher off of that will make a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just keep on bringing some more School Choice kids in.
I think next year's, the year is going to be a little more baby's point. Tricky in terms of kindergarten, because that's usually where we get half our School Choice. Last year we had six, sixth graders leave, and we had six incoming kindergarteners that are School Choice. But when we're looking at the census next year, there's a lot of kids in Waitley that are, that are kindergarten age, so we're going to be limited in terms of what we can take for School Choice.
That's good, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
More residents.
Yes.
Then I said, that funny game. They're not all.
At least they're not all old people moving to town, you know.
No, we need, well, we love the...
Not saying I'm old.
I'm an old person.
That's a young retiree.
Yeah. Okay, great. So, any other questions or anything on the financials? Okay, thank you, Shelley. Public comments?
Anything, Mary?
Nobody's here.
I love that.
Okay. Unfinished business, continued discussion of establishing a long-term planning group. So, is this mine?
We said we would put that back on there.
Right. I noticed that we're talking about this with the chairs, the long-term planning, the school board committee chairs, which is a little different.
Yeah, but that's, it's a little different, that's talking about the, you know, kind of things as a whole. It's not talking about, wait, as an individual.
Right.
I think, you know, some of that conversation, you know, Chrissy and I have been talking about it on the side, about what does that look like and how should that kind of funnel through? And I guess it's kind of identifying, what is the goal versus the outcomes of that committee you'd like to, like to see, and then how does that, how does that differ from school improvement plans?
And school council.
What's that?
And school council.
From school councils, school council doing school...
Which does the school improvement.
There's a school improvement plan, which sends you direction.
Did they see school council was going to be involved in that as well for long-term planning, did they see that?
That was mentioned in something, that was one of our, in the minutes.
One of the things that comes up in school council is thoughts on...
Maybe we should...
I'm happy to have the school council take it on, I think it, it kind of needs a leader, and I don't have the time to do it, honestly, so if we can find someone on the school council that would be willing to maybe take that on. My main goal is to bring the different constituents in the community together, to be thinking about how to support the school and build a stronger school going forward, not, you know, what can we do to continue to improve Waitley, and to understand the financial implications of not doing that. I mean, I love that model that, I'm blanking on his name, Gotchel and Silverland Gregg.
Great, yeah.
Bill. I would love to have something, I mean, I haven't seen it, but from what I hear about it, it sounds really helpful to just project out, you know, five, 10 years.
We, we've been using it in negotiations on long-term, you know, retirements, and how much it's going to cost different towns and stuff like that, it really...
I think it would be really helpful to have something like that for each school, to be able to really just play with the projections, and what if this happens, what if this happens? And then we can build a plan around how to insulate the school from some of those risks and continue to grow the school. But I think it's important to include parents and the town families, so that's the only thing with the school council, I don't know, like, that's a good starting point, but I think it would be a great idea to incorporate the finance committee and the select board a little bit, and like, have maybe a member from each participate, because we want this to be a joint effort. We don't want this to be...
Could you just volunteer, Jonathan?
I think I'd volunteer, Jonathan Edwards. But I think, oh, my gosh, there's, we already have a member of the select board, it's, Joyce, Joyce is the sort of school liaison, if you will. And I know Paul Antea is very interested in the school, so it doesn't need to be a big effort, but I just think we want to be working together to make sure everybody's on the same page as much as possible.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if the school council wants to start with sort of the vision of where we want to be going, and then we can bring in some of the financial implications, or get feedback from the town, that might be a way to do it.
So are you nominating Maureen to be on that school council from the school committee?
No.
Who's on the school council right now?
Justin Davis.
Justin Davis, Chrissy Huntley, Megan Ashman, Mr. G, but he was unavailable to come last year. So that was one area that I wanted to look into, is finding some additional community members.
Mrs. G was on it, too. Was there another parent? There's usually three parents.
Trying to think, someone else who didn't come.
One of them's...
There was a sixth grade...
He called his mom, so...
And they're gone, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, means we could focus on getting that group in place, and then I'm happy to go meet with them when they meet, and talk about it, and try and recruit some participants, that's helpful.
Want to come to open house tonight and recruit?
Tonight.
Tonight's open house, huh?
Yeah. I have a chairs meeting.
No, no, we'll be done by then, we'll be done by then.
I have basketball practice.
Open house is a little crazy, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's not the best time to recruit people, probably.
It's like, yeah, like, everybody's everywhere.
Yeah, but that's a good time to like, get people to sign things, because they're not sure what they're signing.
You could have nominated your spouse, cut him a little box.
Oh, you were five minutes late, so you're, you're on this committee now.
I guess who's on the committee now? No, I'm, I am interested for the public to know of getting more people involved. I mean, Maureen and Bob and I aren't going to be on the committee forever, so we need to keep involving new parents as we can, any efforts here.
Well, I, my kids are...
Part of my goal.
My, my kids are long gone, but I'm still, I'm still here, but that's...
I applaud that.
Got to keep the old blood here to talk about the old and days a little bit, but there again, you have, what we have plans for long-term.
Yeah.
To figure out what we can do in a school, take things off of School Choice, make more...
Right, like, it is a long-term game at the end of the day, so we need to, I mean, we have to balance budget every year, but we also need to be thinking about where we're heading, you know, that's the better strategic way to operate if we can. Okay, so, the to-dos in my mind then are to get the school council organized and bring this idea to them, and see if they would be willing to take it on as part of their thinking. And then I'm happy to reach out to Joyce and Paul and just see what their thoughts are.
Yeah, Paul was on last year at the finance committee meeting, talking about having me build a Cadillac here, so...
That's right, that's what, exactly, you need to take advantage.
You know, Paul is retired, so he has time.
He has some time.
And he has two vested interests.
He has a lot of interests, so I think we should keep that energy going. Okay. Does that work, everybody? Any other?
So, it's, one of the things, if you could write down your thoughts on what you wanted that to be, or what, like a mission.
Charter.
Charter.
When there's a meeting, if you let me know, I'll, I'll come to the first one and just listen, or thoughts, or whatever, so, I mean, maybe all of us can go and, you know, that we are involved with it.
Yeah, part of it is just making sure we're capturing everybody's thinking, so that we're not just kind of going in isolation.
We'll get that Cadillac going.
The Cadillac, well, or the Range Rover, which is what my daughter wants.
Name high, Margaret.
Okay, hand it over to Darius, who's, who's the new business?
Sure, well, you have a...
Oh, we have to nominate a delegate?
Is anyone...
Is anybody going to the conference this year?
I didn't sign up. Did I see your name on there?
Yeah, I'm going. When's the, when's the voting on Fri, is it on Friday?
I don't know, I, Friday afternoon last year.
Okay, I'm going to be there. I'm going down, I think Bob and I are going down, he wanted to be going on Tuesday night for a Wednesday morning, what is it, what's Wednesday morning, the joint school committee co, meeting, or...
Just fill that out.
Okay.
Maureen, you don't want to go away again?
I do.
She was just in Hawaii.
Hawaii.
I just came back Sunday morning.
It was a nice job.
Getting ideas for school, getting ideas for school committee, don't worry, we paid for it.
It was unbelievable. I highly recommend.
I can't fly that far, I could never.
It was long, but it's worth it. Left Saturday at around noon and came back Sunday morning.
Mm-hmm.
Three flights, ooh, and back.
So you got to nominate me to...
Okay, we're going to nominate you.
You got to vote on it, too.
Make a motion to...
Make a motion for Bob to nominate Bob to be the delegate.
I second.
To the MASC.
All in favor? Okay. And now I'm going to hand it over. Safe Schools.
So, as you know, we sent you guys all an email back in June when we received the award, but I just wanted to say publicly here, that Waitley received $25,000 in the Safe Schools grant, so it's a non-matching grant, so we don't have to do any, no money's coming out of our pockets, outside of maybe some small maintenance stuff here and there in order to make it all kind of run, but we will be upgrading our, our key system for entering the building to a key fob system that'll match what Frontier's did this year, Deerfield did this year as well, and as well as improving cameras and that, and those kind of security things, and other odds and ends out of that grant, so...
When is that going to happen?
In that, take the words out of my mouth, that's going to happen pretty quickly, because we have to spend the money by December 1st.
The grant will cover all that?
Yeah, so...
Yeah, the person who deals with the hardware in the door was already here, checking things out.
So, yeah, they're already moving forward to get the bids and that kind of thing, so again, thank you to Scott Pollard, IT Director, who put the lion's share into the writing of the grant, and then all the principals and law enforcement that worked, there was a lot of supporting documents that had to go with it, so, but, you know, overall, the larger district received over $140,000 to do all the buildings, so it was good to get us up to...
So how's that going to work with families and kids and stuff, do they get fobs, or is just the staff that gets the fobs, or...
So basically, we're just changing keys to fobs, and so the fob, what's, what's nice about it is it actually allows us to, being a community building, now you can have keys, if you have a basketball league, your key will work when the basketball league's on the weekends and not work at 9:00 AM on Tuesday morning.
You can set it.
You can set the exact times, you can see who is, you can see who's here, we're tracking and going, but cameras do that already, but we're going to improve that as well.
It also makes it during the school day, we know exactly who has access to the building.
Right, and so if you had to disgruntle anyone, you could chuck their key off and then, you know, that kind of thing, and as we know, through the years, keys get handed out, oh, running this, this group's coming in, they get a key, didn't get it back yet, and, you know, they give it to someone who gives it to someone who's supposed to give it back, you know, now we can control those.
So where's that going to happen? Is that going to be in the front office, or the controlling of those keys?
All of the, all of the doors.
It goes all in.
Now, who's going to issue the keys and who's going to keep, who's going to maintain who has access to getting?
So, it's kind of trickle-down, the central office has the, kind of the master sets up each of the building, then each office can create fobs, yeah, you just basically, each fob has a code on it, you enter the code, and then you can give the access. There's different access packages that we're creating administratively, so let's say your rec, rec access means it's going to be open from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday, and then, you know, after 6:00 on during the weekdays, or something of that sort, you know.
But the school will have ability to add that to people and take it away?
Yep, yep. You can add it, take it away, modify it to whatever, however you want to do it, so...
Based on the rules, that's great.
Right, and then there's still a key system, but those keys will be hard to come by in the sense of, you have a key override for police, fire, principal.
The master key.
Yeah, but even those are, you know, that's, instead of having, I don't know how many Yeah, but even those are, you know, that's instead of having, I don't know how many masters are out there to get in every door that all will come in.
That should help.
So all doors?
Yes.
All doors.
Classroom doors and everything?
Uh, no, not the, not the classroom.
Exter, external doors.
The doors that currently have a keypad will have a fob system.
So like this door here inside, fire door, that locks, right? Which in the hallway?
The one right here out to the bathrooms.
That would not be on it, right?
It's just outside the building, you know, inside, well, update those key when necessary, but again, it's more, this is a law enforcement grant, so it's more about.
External.
External accesses rather than internal, so, you know, then obviously we'll rekey the outdoors so that the hard key override doesn't work. And those will be reissued to those.
So how will communications happen with the people that aren't part of the school, like the groups? I know.
Mary's pretty good.
Rec, we'll find out, I'm sure, but, um.
We had, we changed the code recently and Mary took care of making sure.
Mary's in charge of keeping.
Everyone who uses the building.
That's the story there, yeah.
That's really great. Settlements.
So my recommend is, my recommendation is to move it at the end because you require executive session, but discussion of the settlement agreement for the instructional assistance.
For the assistants too?
Yep, they're just the assistants who we're discussing, they're still negotiating with the teachers. So, so one contract's ready to go, so we'll discuss that, but we should go to executive session to talk about.
Talk about it?
The ins and outs of that, but I'll put it at the end if you, if you desire.
Okay, let's skip that and go to the end, so policy on the dissemination of information.
Dissemination of information, so this is, this policy is to basically move our schools to a more paperless environment when dealing with outside organizations handing out flyers for kids. Currently, the practice is if you're an outside group, you get approval from the superintendent to distribute your flyer, and then they drop off about five hundred of them off at the elementary school, and then the secretary, and then teachers have to divide those up, put them into backpacks, they go home, and, you know, you've got all these different flyers going home.
Parents clean them out over the summer.
Use them for scrap.
So what we want to do is basically say that we will add them as part of the principal's newsletter at the end. And so there'll just be all the different kind of nonprofit opportunities in the community, that kind of thing. The, the policy is very forgiving in the sense of if the superintendent or the principal deem there's a flyer that really should go home on paper, let's say there was a centennial parade or something like that, they want to do more than just, you know, they want to do more than just a, they want to make sure there's certain flyers going home. You know, this doesn't apply to any school stuff, this isn't applied to the PTO, this only applies to outside groups. And again, that can be, you know, we can override if we feel that there's a reason that something has to be sent home on paper, so.
So you're saying it'll go home at, with the newsletter, the school newsletter, it'd be included in the newsletter?
If we, if we deemed there was something from the outside that should be done that way, but we're gonna try to limit the amount of paper going home. So the digital.
But these outside groups will provide their own paper?
Right now, yeah, that's, they already do on that, but it's just the, the amount of flyers going home across.
Yeah.
You know, from, you know, it just seems to be more and more as it, you know.
Well, what about the website? I mean, and I guess I'm just a little, I don't want to, we don't want to cut off communication, we want to cut off paper.
Yep.
But we want the flow of information about what's happening to be there.
Mostly the way we're talking about is going through emails, right?
Right, we're talking to be part of.
So it would go through email.
Yeah, with the email, when the, the.
Just limiting the paper.
When the principal's report goes out.
They'll be attached to it.
They will scan in the flyer for, you know, for.
Girl Scouts.
Girl Scouts.
Yeah.
Camps that offer in the summer, instead of all these flyers going home, it's gonna be all in one place. The other side of it is, depending on how good the delivery of the model is, some flyers may or may not be getting home.
Right.
And so at least this is all gonna go in one place, they have to get it before the principal sends out the, or Mary sends out. Me two could fight out, we actually send it out, but scans it in.
We don't have to fight about that, Mary.
Mary, or Mary.
Y'all know Mary does.
You know, we're just gonna add it to the end, so there'll be, these are all the different things that are going on with kids, for kids in the community. Yeah, that's the.
It's great, it's great. Saves some trees.
Saves some trees.
I like saving the trees.
Yeah, and then.
But I, I'm worried that people aren't gonna get the information.
Well, if they get an email and it pops up on their computer or their iPhones, whatever.
I know, but it's gonna be at the bottom of this long, already long document that some people read, some people don't. I, it's, I'm not gonna know, but I just think, I think it would be nice if there was a way on the website to connect to other groups that want to communicate to the school community, like more of a place people can go reference. We don't have a lot of those in the district right now, it's more you have to catch the email, and if you miss the email, then you have to go find the email versus having it on the website, like I think, I think we put the, the newsletter on the website, right?
So then all that will be.
Then all that will be up there, but might not be easy to find.
We could do more links to that, but my, my concern is that.
Then it looks like it's something that we.
So what, how much do you sponsor, you know, I mean, you would say you sponsor a camp, if something very bad happens at the camp, what was the school's oversight of that camp, you were advertising that camp? And so it's kind of that balance between being a conduit to give opportunities for kids versus, and then some of them, you know.
Endorsing things.
Yeah, and so, and like I said, it's different if the, you know, the rec department wants to do something and they're asking, you know, you know, we'll be able to see, we'll be able to see, let's say basketball rec comes up and they're like, we haven't got any feedback on that, can we send it home this way? You know, it would just be, you know, school by school will be able to control.
We're such a small community and there's only a few opportunities for people to get involved, and it's hard to get the word out in general. The other thing would be to encourage them to contact the scoop, which Joyce sends out, because that's a great.
They have to do that in way ahead of time, because that's only a few times a year.
But it just might be something you can mention to people that want to get in touch with the Wheatley community specifically.
Speaking of sending flyers out, it's time for the pie and cookie dough fundraiser.
Well, the first one, the first one, if you, if you read, it's a month, so the fifth grade is the first fundraiser. And then that one must be.
This is for the PTO, it's one of our best fundraisers, and it's a pie and cookie dough in time for the holidays.
You can eat the cookie dough right out of container, right?
And that one is exempt from this policy because the PTO is exempt from, and then is considered a school organization, so you're, again, we're really talking about thirty.
I know, I just want to.
You want a question?
Oh, I hear you, well, those delicious pies are.
Come find your elementary school student.
Yeah.
Just call the office.
Call me.
Very, very, you get credit for the second.
Yeah, I was thinking that we might want to go green in our meetings too at some point, maybe, we could use the Chromebooks instead of.
So other committees have gone digital?
Yes.
So you just have to, you have to just.
Consider that.
If you guys want it all digital, I mean, I have some committees that are running it off iPads, some people, and then members who want to print it out. Make arrangements through my office to get it printed out.
Okay.
Bob, and.
Well, I mean, we do print a lot of.
Bob, I like his meetings.
We do, well, and I still, I mean, there's some stuff I have to bring printed, but the general packet is.
Well, they want to give me a, give us a Chromebook, I mean, we can have a Chromebook.
The school Chromebooks while we're here. There's no reason we couldn't do that, right?
Yep.
So, let's think about it.
I mean, I guess I could bring my Mac, I just, I get frustrated sometimes with computers.
You don't want to be frustrated.
If it's, if it's, if it's Facebook, it's great, but everything else, I have a tough time with it.
Well, maybe I'll give you the posting through Facebook.
But do we have a place that all of our school committee documents are stored, like a Google Drive or anything?
Isn't that funny, it's on the agenda.
Is it? Awesome, I'm sorry.
Is this policy, these two policies are brand new?
So this is a reading, we're not voting us today.
Oh, okay.
So we do a reading, we'll vote it next month. And what's nice is we'll probably vote it at the joint meeting, we could get, because all five will be done at once, but that'll be a question I'll bring to the chairs this afternoon if they want to do it that way.
So they're new though?
These are new, yeah, but we do have a dissemination of information. There's one in there that's a little bit different, but this is a new one, I think it's KHCA or something like that, it just has to do with advertising in schools or something like that, I don't know.
And the dissection alternatives, it's not really relevant to.
Again, as you know, we try to be consistent all the way through, what's interesting is that I was talking with our superintendents and they don't do this, and they wish they did, because sometimes you get a sixth grade class suddenly dissects, decides to dissect something, and the teacher wanted to go out of the, and all of a sudden they don't have a policy on it because they didn't think they did.
That's what I was gonna ask, do we do that in this elementary school that you know?
Are there any dissections?
No, the first graders found some dead bugs outside, but closest that we get to that.
There has been, I've been, I have been in, I was in a sixth grade room in Deerfield and they were dissecting cow hearts. Had something, it was an extension of a unit, wasn't part of the curriculum, direct part of the curriculum, so, but, so it could happen, you can send outside.
Did you say cow?
Cow heart? You were looking at it, something to do with. No, just a cow heart.
Just the heart.
Anyway, so we try to stay consistent, but this is a practice already in place at Frontier, but we didn't have a policy to back it up. I mean, it's something I ran, some of that ten different things, we hear with people, the people had problems with, and I said, you know what? Let's just kind of beef up those, those policies there. So those are readings, we'll vote them at the next meeting.
We voted, okay, so you want to go through the reports?
I would recommend going through reports and then maybe executive session, yep.
So, I'd be curious, projects over the summer?
Yep, that's part of my report.
Okay.
Yep, so it's like Bob pre-wrote his principal's report, so it's no surprise with him. As he mentioned, the fifth grader started their fundraising this year, and it was kind of amazing, I, I learned to look forward to that day that the moms get delivered and the whole front lawn gets covered with them. Um, we had summer STEM camp here this summer, and it was for students from all the, all the four schools, and it was pretty great. You know, it was, it was nice to have a chance to walk around and see all the things that they were doing. And one of the things that they were doing, learning to code using Dash Robots, I don't know if you're familiar with those, but we just bought a classroom set so that the classes can begin to work on coding as well. The, the teachers did such a great job. We started our year again with an ice cream social. It was very well attended, and it was fortunately not a hundred and two degrees like it was last year.
Ice cream wasn't melted.
So we were actually able to scoop ice cream instead of just having it in those cups.
A ladle.
Yeah. And then the, the next day, we started school with a dance party, I know some of you were here last year, but this year seemed to.
Really take off?
Kicked up a notch, there was.
Oh, in the morning?
Yeah.
The breeding?
Yeah, it was here. In fact, some, some of the adults and kids asked why we don't do that every morning. On the mornings, I'm out there, I bring my speaker with me and we have.
Good morning, Wheatley students and staff, today is Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. Lunch today is chicken tacos and corn and fruit. Celebrating a birthday today is our pledge leader, Jack Bennett, Eppet Jackson. Happy birthday, my friend, please stand for the pledge.
I am the just two of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Open announcements today, open houses tonight from six to seven, and we look forward to seeing you and your family here at our school. And tomorrow, we're going to have a different way of doing morning announcements, they'll be led by students. Our kind of action today is to think about inclusion. As the sixth graders showed us in the ticket at our school meeting, it's important to include people, and it makes us all work and play better together. Thanks.
So she kind of hit on something I was about to talk about.
Well done.
So I, in terms of the beginning of the year, I was very pleased with not only the way those first couple days went, but the way we sort of fell right back into routine, and it's, it was a very smooth opening, in fact, I had said to Darius at one point, hi, I'm like.
Waiting.
I'm waiting, things have, things have gone, things have gone well. We have some new staff members, Amy Tibbetts is a new first grade teacher. Sarah Chapdeline, last year was an IA sub, but now she is permanently ours as the first grade instructional assistant. Grace Bergren is our pre-K instructional assistant. Christine Surard is our new general music teacher. She, when she is not here being our general music teacher, she is the assistant director of the mass marching band. And Mary Joschere is home with her baby this year, so Katie Miranda is covering the streams program.
And I saw in this, there's an early childhood extended day.
Yeah, Mariah Fremol is our early childhood extended day.
So there's two new in preschool?
She just, she comes at the very end of the day and does the, the part from two-thirty to five-thirty. Under the category of general awesomeness, I had the fifth grade fundraiser. Yesterday, we had, we had our first all-school meeting, and we're doing it a little differently this year, I've sort of assigned each meeting to different grades to, to host. We're also doing a book of the month where every classroom in the school will read the book of the month with the kids. And it'll be based on one of our core values, and this, this month's core value is inclusion. And the, the kids, unprompted by their teacher, decided they wanted to write a little skit that sort of went along with the book, and it was, it was great, they did a fantastic job. And we're gonna start something new a little later in the year, I don't know if any of you have heard of Genius Hour, which is a, a thing that was invented by the fine folks at Google.
I saw you got some certificates, is that from there? Did you do some training, it said genius?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you're a genius?
No.
She is an.
That's true, that's true, I gotta frame that hanging on my wall. At Google, they, they allow their employees twenty percent of their time at work to pursue their own projects. And from that comes a lot of the innovations that then get passed on to us, so in the same vein, we want to offer an opportunity for our kids to have some more self-directed learning. To give everyone a chance to, to follow whatever it is that they're interested in, so the whole school will be doing it at the same time. Which means that when we distribute all the staff members throughout the school, there'll be groups of six students with one advisor from the staff. And if you're interested in it, you can just Google Genius Hour in schools, and there's lots of videos about the kinds of projects the kids do. And then at the end of the year, we would have a sort of project there. We're looking forward to that, and the teachers are, have worked really hard to try and figure out what this is gonna look like for us. So the summer work, as you notice, at the top of the list are my gym floors. If you have not visited my gym floors, please do so before you leave. They, they've been walked upon a little bit, I was trying to figure out a way to not.
It's gonna happen.
Not have kids walk on them in their shoes, but the gym teacher did not think that it was a good idea to just have gym in socks. But the, they did a beautiful job on the floors. And then we had two classroom floors replaced with tile, so the carpets came up.
Which ones?
We did first grade and third grade.
How many we have left?
The upper wing?
The, the whole upper wing, but we also were awaiting the floors to be installed in the nursery, because that was another part of the project that we had planned for this, this year.
For where?
The nurses' office.
But I think what you're saying about is, we're gonna try to look to a year.
Yeah, we just, I didn't know what we, I didn't know what we had left or whatever, so.
A few more, a few more years of this.
Hey, get rid of those carpets.
Yeah, I'm trying to hang on to the ones in the hallway though, because it's so nice. Two classrooms got painted, and again, one of those was the first grade classroom, so our new first grade teacher has come to expect that. We get the best of everything, she got new floors, yeah. The office was painted, the ceiling in the foyer was painted, and it doesn't seem like that is such a big deal, but it really is. It was, it was a lot of work to get up there, we had to get staging in here, and I think it made a huge difference.
Looks like the, looks like we've done something in, I don't know, there's some spots over there, but we used to have some more right here, like that stain there was trying to cover it up. I mean, it looks better than, but some of these stains in this room has been here since, like the ones at Frontier, they've been there a long time, a lot of these have been here for a long time.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out how to address this and the ones in the gym.
You gotta use a stain killer on, on.
But just in terms of getting there.
Don't we, don't we rent a lift once in a while? I mean, some of those little scissor lifts would work, or a big step ladder, I mean, they do, and I've done it before, so it's.
Kids could probably.
Leavisher consulting.
But it, but it does make it, even if the color's off a little bit, it's better than that brown, like if you look over at like those brown stains.
Yeah, I don't love that.
Like I said, this one here was covered up pretty good, better than what it was up there.
Yeah, and we did a lot of that throughout the building, with the work that they did on the sprinklers. A lot of rooms sustained water stains just around where the sprinkler heads are, so Dan did a great job of going around, and Kaylin, our summer guy, took care of most of that.
I didn't look, but how's our light post out there, did anything get done with those? Okay, I'll talk to you about that later.
The office window frames and door frames were painted, as well as outside the library. Vent covers in the bathrooms were painted, the vestibule in the upper and lower wing were painted. All the floors were stripped in wax, all the carpets were shampooed. We replaced the lights in the foyer, there had been always sort of like a yellow tint to everything, so we replaced the bulbs, it made a big difference. The HVA, C vents and filters were cleaned out, the sprinkler work was finished, and the generator work was finished.
Yay.
So we're done with the sprinklers?
Yeah, that's all.
Printed, right?
Excellent. No flooding in the office this summer?
No, no, there was no.
Kind of boring, right?
That was like one of my first days, I mean, it was raining in my room.
I saw some new trees outside of this. Did you guys, did you see those? Like in big pots?
The flowers?
No, there's some like big trees out next to the, remember where all the trees burned down years ago?
Those aren't new.
Those aren't new?
No, those have been here.
They, they just grew. They look big, okay.
Like the opera vibes, I think we had on.
The ones that have like regular, like oak tree or.
Yeah, I mean, they've got those black things around.
Yeah, those have been there for a while?
That is more in point, I didn't. Because they were small.
So the generator, what had to be done with the generator? Do you know, or?
It's all wired now, I think, I think that was the last thing, it's electrician.
I think it was last year, but I think it just has probably maintenance now, and it's monthly or weekly.
It runs weekly, it's Wednesday morning, I think Wednesday morning, it's loud.
Is it Wednesday?
I got out of my car one day and it was like, what is happening?
But now we have a place where, emphasizing, we've been waiting for a long time for a generator, so if we ever had like that October storm there where people had to go to Deerfield, now they can come to our school and we can take care of them.
You're lucky enough to have a key fob, you can get it.
I'll talk to you about that later.
School community gets those, don't they?
Is there another rock out front? Oh, there's a few pieces of snow, so, yeah.
Which rock?
In which rock, right? Because they have like a thousand rocks out there.
Okay. I don't have any updates, I've been welcoming everybody back. Collaborative tomorrow night, tomorrow night. Principal, superintendent.
A lot of mine, stuff we've already touched upon, and we had a great, wonderful opening and pre-opening day with the teachers. Negotiations continues with the teachers, we did our first mediation on September 5th, and we have another one as of October 10th. We'll discuss the details in, in executive session. The superintendent evaluation they filled out in June likely will be discussed at the joint meeting. The chairs will be discussing how they want to bring that forward today, actually. Committee email addresses, it was brought to my attention again, that those who attend the MASC training, that really all, school community members should have a school address for school committee business. I've talked with IT, and I've already created accounts for everyone. And basically, what's nice now is we have the ability for those accounts to be created remotely, which was something we couldn't do years past, was a lot, was a lot more of a headache for school committee members. So, I think now the fact that we can send it out to you, can we create a, basically a Gmail suite through, that's what we're talking about, can we create a place for school committee documents? We can, and we can create a, it's not already created, but once we have a Gmail suite with everybody, we can include everybody in for those documents. So, those will be sent to you this morning to set up. And also, you, instructions on how to forward. The big thing about school committee is that, especially for the camera, there's not a whole lot of dialogue that's happening via email. So, it's usually just, here's the agenda, you know, setting dates and that kind of stuff. So, it can be sent to this account, this account can forward, and send an announcement to your, to your main email account, and sending directions on how to do that. So, I mean, you look at your Yahoo account, it'll say, oh, you got an update on your other account. So, you don't have to, because the infrequency of the amount of emails that, you know, get sent out, you know, for school committee business, you know, my concern is that you, you know, you check it once a week, and I sent it out an hour after you check it, and, you know, this time sent, so you can have it forwarded to whatever your main email address is. Just the idea is make sure you sign into that account when you do any business responding and that kind of stuff, so. So, you'll get those a little bit later today.
I saw some other issue I had written down, if we want to use Chromebooks at the meeting, we're going to need to log in. You can't have that without.
Oh, okay.
And if I receive email, so that works out.
Yeah, so now you'll have that as well, so. Yeah, so that's, that's what's happening there. If you choose not to use it, that's really just basically your own, your own choice, create the account, then you'll have to talk with Donna if you don't want to use it. But I do feel we should provide it. And the last one was just a Frontier Capital Bond did finally go through at the end of June, was approved by Deerfield, was connected to a debt exclusion vote. So, right now, we're, it's a long process of bond councils and that kind of stuff that have now approved it also.
You have an issue that you just got approval to issue.
We just have approval to, to, we have approval to take on debt.
Take on the debt.
And, and so now, the Capital Improvement Subcommittee made up of school committee members and select board members will get together, probably not until November, I'm waiting for it, we need to get approved through the, the bond council. And then we'll need to kind of create the timeline of how we'll approach that plan, so. I only mention because it's big enough where people are kind of paying attention, even though it's not really Wheatley business.
We've been waiting a long time, I'm on that committee, and we've been.
Just been working on this a long time.
Long time, I mean, it's much needed, some much needed things need to be done, and whether it's small or big, we've been trying to take care of some of the small things, like with E and D and stuff like that, but, but the big stuff.
Like the track and.
Yeah, there's some other thing, we have an envelope project above the, above the library. We have money to use in the library, but we don't want to use the money in the library until, till the roof and all that stuff gets done. Then we can forth and use the, the money that was given to us by Mr.
Mark.
Mr. Marks. And so, we're just, we're just waiting, you know.
How much was the bond, 100,000?
How much was the bond for?
Yeah.
Oh, to take up the loan, 1.8?
1.8 million?
And change. That, that would say, 100,000 out of that.
Roundy, rounding error. Okay.
So, your summer retreat, are you going to talk about that at the October meeting?
Yeah, we're going to talk about, so, then we'll talk about the professional development plan that was developed at the October retreat. I mean, our October retreat was, was, it was actually wonderful in some levels, right? You know?
It was, it was October retreat?
Not October.
Summer retreat.
No, summer retreat, I said October.
Last year, October.
Oh, I'm going to plan on.
Are we having another one?
It was amazing, so we got together and we developed basically the direction for the strategic plan, and where we want to go with, and so I'll be explained at the October meeting with everybody, with Sarah and Kim. We'll take the lead on that. But we kind of, we developed the, the whole, the whole plan on that moving forward, reflecting, looking at the surveys that went out. Each principal sat down and went through their own results, the community surveys, get the community input on things. We did a, we did a full session of everybody putting all their ideas and worries up on the board, and kind of building a plan from there. And then, after that, the other professional development plan did fall through, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting in June, that, that plan that we were going to have a speaker come in and meet with us. She was unable to make it, so the principals got together to do some collaboration on trying to create consistency across all four schools, from handbooks to, not policies, but, but procedures around things. Principals enjoyed it so much, they volunteered to come back the following week to do more days of it, because they were making such progress in different areas. So, just shows you how, how well that administrative team is, you know, working together, they.
Want to spend time.
They, I wouldn't say they, but they, you know, people have to change schedules and stuff to come back the following week to be working together again to find that, so that was, that was good, right? Chrissy, right?
Yes.
You know, all, basically all five principals are fairly new. Ben probably.
Ben's got the seniority.
Ben's a seniority, but I call him a young kid still, but he's, I mean, it's great that you guys can come up with some new ideas and.
Well, and for most of us, it's just the principal on his or her own, and so having someone to bounce ideas off of is helpful.
Once you're all coming from other districts, which brings some good ideas and information to share.
You know, I drove, I drove by Deerfield Elementary yesterday, just off a different topic, but I couldn't believe how many cars that are in the parking lot there. I know a couple probably people were visiting, but how many people actually work at Deerfield Elementary School was, there must have been 75 cars there, and, I mean, it's a big school.
That's a big parking lot.
That's a big school, I mean, that's just that parking lot, now who parks out back or something? But it's, you know, same thing here, if you go out back now, there's probably 25 cars here. It's amazing how many people work in these different schools and stuff, I mean, I just.
We're very lucky to have the staff that do the numbers, and it allows everyone to get the attention they need.
It is part of, it's what Chrissy just kind of said a minute ago regarding that, she doesn't have a, another person in the building.
Yeah, right hand.
You got to get her number on a phone.
She has a mare.
You got mare.
You have mare.
But, so it's important that the, you know, the, you know, as our, yeah, I have principal meetings every month, I have administrative meetings every month, and different goals happen in each one of those meetings, but the principal's meeting is a lot about, you know, sharing, collaborating on different ideas, because you don't have, and then be able to, you have to build those relationships so you can pick up the phone. Because that every, I mean, they can always call me, but sometimes they just want to call, hey, I got this, this issue, how do you handle something like this?
Yeah, and we'll stop when we call each other.
You call each other, so, yeah.
Can I ask that one, please?
All right, thank you.
The community survey, was there any results that we could see, that what the feedback was?
Yeah.
Is that something that could be shared? Anything interesting, any highlights?
There's lots of interesting, the thing about the, the thing about the community survey is that it's, you get a mix. You know, we get some different, some things that we said, oh, yeah, that's nice, and then you get some, as I would say, mass live rant, you know what I mean, where it goes on and on, that kind of thing. And so, those aren't productive, you know, that kind of thing, but, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, interesting.
And I was just looking at the minutes, position of the food service director, to be made as a salary position, how's that going?
So, she has been made as a salary position, so, and I've done all that, so, which was the, the thing to do. We brought her up to, she's done, Mary's done an excellent job, she's, you know, four of the five schools are in the black. And we went from deficit, huge deficits in each of our schools to, and I think overall, the product has improved. Well, I think food service in schools can, you're constantly working on trying to improve that, and dealing with the raw nature of what they're going to deal with. But she's done a wonderful job, she's a wonderful, also a great colleague to be working with. You know, we're going to show you, she has to work with her quite a bit now, just getting the, you know, those numbers together. But we brought her into scale of what other people are being paid around us, and.
That's great, I hope we can keep her.
That was the, that was the idea. It wasn't for the, it wasn't huge jumps in, in pay, but it was enough to say, listen, you shouldn't be doing timesheets of when you came in, when you came out, she comes early, she stays late, you know, I mean, she's acting, she's overseeing other people, so it is a, should be a salary position.
She's probably earned back the money that she's getting in her salary in many ways.
In, in, yeah, I'm going to say in some cases even more so.
Right.
And then I saw our numbers are down a little this year.
Yep. School choice is.
Is that all of this?
No, it's school choice is holding steady.
Is up.
Okay.
Up a few, but nothing.
Just got to have more people waiting, sorry, having more kids.
Yes, have more babies, please.
Yeah, we were neck and neck with Conway last year, like we'd go back and forth of who's the smallest school and I think.
Now we've taken the crown.
And pre-K still looks relatively healthy, there's a lot of kids in there.
Yeah.
And hopefully they're healthy.
There's.
It's always sick children.
Yeah, that's, that's a big number for pre-K.
Yeah, that's great.
And you said we got six school choice in kindergarten, were they?
Yep.
From the preschool?
Yeah.
Let's go into the executive session.
Okay.
So, you're going to be going, make sure when you do a motion, you're doing an exemption for two things. We're going to be approving other executive session minutes, and I think approving the release of executive session minutes as well. And then you're going to be going in to go to both discuss.
The teachers.
Teachers and IAs.
And the IAs.
Yeah. And you may be returning for a vote, because if you, we'll be talking about the settlement agreement for the instructional assistants. And so, if you agree, you'll be coming out to vote the settlement agreement.
Do you have to vote on the minutes out of the executive session or in session?
In session.
For the exit, for the minutes?
So, you'll come back.
And vote on minutes here and then the IAs.
You'll vote to, you'll vote to release them in executive session, then they'll be released.
So, we'll, we'll stick about it in the video at this point, we don't need to have it back, or do we?
You'll just be doing, you'll be doing a single vote, it'll be up to Chrissy, if she wants to stick around to do the.
You may not get that on the vote, yeah.
So, I'll let her know if she wants to know what happened. But you need to roll call in on both of those. We can say them together and just roll call in.
So, I'm making a motion to go into executive session to, for the purpose of releasing the executive session minutes from November 6th, 2017, and May 7th, 2018, and to approve, or no, that's it?
Yep.
And then.
And to approve June, you're going to approve some, you're going to release some.
That will approved on June 4th.
Yep.
Okay. Then we're also going to discuss the strategy for collective bargaining with the teachers,